Planning Board meeting to order. Have the board members reviewed the meeting notes from the past meeting?
Yes, sir.
Take a minute, please, Mr. Long. Mr. Long, have you had the chance to review the meeting notes from the last meeting?
Yes.
I get a motion to approve those meeting notes?
Some of them.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Now time for chairman's update. For those of you who don't know, there was one of the projects that we have going on in town had a collapse about four weeks ago on a building that's being erected. Our building department has followed up and it's got a couple of structural engineering reports that I'd like to enter into the record, Nancy. I'll leave these with you if you want to stamp them. And there's an ongoing investigation on that project to follow. So... I'll leave those for Nancy. That's 860 Broadway.
Oh, okay.
Does the board have anything they'd like to add? I think this is appropriate time to bring up a lot of chatter once again about this planning board, but I will assure everyone, anything that this planning board that has done to date, nothing but good has come out of it. We pushed them to the brink to make sure that they're in line. We have the past planning board, which I was part of only for a few months, has caused this disruption on this town that's unbelievable. You can't believe it. We're five years into some of these projects and it's a disaster. So when the town manager says, "The legal cost," believe me, it's the legal cost, but it's not from this board. I got to give these guys a lot of credit for what they've done bringing this into order. So I appreciate yous, I really do. Nancy, do we have any additional subdivision or site plan submissions?
We do not.
We do not?
Mr. Chair.
But this is... Did you count on this one, Nancy?
That was... I... That was the last name I mentioned.
Okay. Everyone's got a copy of this?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to bring up, Mr. Chair, that I had been contacted by one of the neighbors up at the Berthold Extension.
Yes.
That property, they made the listed conditions and it's brought to my attention that nothing's been done with the knotweed. I did speak to Inspection Services and they've been going by and they're going to look at it.
Yep, they did.
If that doesn't get rectified, I would ask that we bring them back in because it is one of the conditions.
I agree 100%.
It was one of the conditions right up front, not to be done at the end of the project, but to be done right away.
So I called them the other morning. Both of them did stop by there and the excuse they had is they're trying to take care of conservation stuff first and I says, "Gentlemen, look at the order of conditions before anything else gets taken care of. Those neighbors have to get taken care of first. If they don't do it, please come back to the board and let us know." So they are watching. Anybody else? We are without a town engineer this evening and we are without a planning director. So due to the long holiday, unfortunately.
Did they send any recommendations?
Excuse me?
Did they send any recommendations?
I have no recommendations from either one.
I didn't see them.
Do you have any?
No, that's why I was asking if they sent them to you.
Yep, no recommendations.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
We're a little early, so we'll take a five-minute break and we'll open up the public hearing.
I make a motion to take a temporary recess until 7:15?
Second? All favor? It has come time now for 7:15 public hearing. There's a recommendations, a warrant to the town meeting. Is the applicant here? So just before... This is a public meeting. Anyone speaks in favor, may do so. Please come to the podium when you speak, give your name and address. Anyone that's in opposition, you come to the podium and speak. Just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Melissa Mercado. I'm here with my mother tonight and we are here to ask the planning board if we could be included with the waterfront mixed-use overlay that is just about 25 feet to the right of our property. It extends over to Ballard Street Rear, which abuts the entire rear property line. We see that you're doing some nice things over there at the public landing and we think that it would be a nice inclusion in your overlay and be an asset to the public and to Sargus and to us as well.
So you've read the article for the overlay?
I have.
And you understand everything that's in that article?
I do.
You understand waterfront property, that you have to turn some of it back over to the town for the public?
It has to, there has to be public access and we do understand that.
And can I ask you reason for wanting to turn it to the overlay?
Well, I think that at this point that the property is underutilized. It's got a 1913 grandfathered pier and float rights and it is being underutilized and it is quite expensive to do these types of upgrades and addition, particularly in the flood zone where we are in Precinct 10 and we get hit quite hard. In order to have these upgrades done to be able to maximize the property, we're hoping that being part of something like the mixed-use overlay may be able to help balance and yield back some of those funds. Additionally, it seems as though the folks that live in our area are interested in having the property as part of it. I think they would appreciate the public access as well.
So do you have expectation of developing this property?
I do.
You do?
I do.
So you would be part of the new development?
I would hope so, either myself or another party. It is currently on the market for sale. So should it be sold, certainly the information will be passed on to whomever it is that would take over the property and they'd have clear and concise instructions on exactly the vision that Sargus has for the waterfront and they'd be able to either more easily make a decision and whether it's something that they'd want to take on, meaning our property, of course, or it would make it more seamless for them to come before you again to go through the process that they'd need to take to continue to develop the property. But I myself do understand it.
You understand that once it goes this way and you don't get it developed?
There's no...
You can't change it.
You can't change it back once you've opted in to the mixed-use overlay.
Did you prepare a map of your property?
There is a plot plan included in it.
In this package?
There is. It's just about the...
I probably have the one that doesn't have it.
You should, but I've brought another if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could explain the layout of the land to the people that are here? I don't have that one. You have that. I guess I do.
Should I bring it to you?
I do have one, I apologize. So the whole lot consists of 10,574 square feet?
Twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine... Two hundred and forty-nine, I apologize.
What was yours, sir?
So they both say something different. So this one here says the 12,000 assesses, this one is the assesses' map and this one is the as-built plan. So this one, unless something changed, this was as of 2019, this would be, I would think, this is the one that's going to be accurate.
So the one that you've submitted to the board, who has the stamp on it, the most latest one, is March 18, 2019?
That was a small scale. I do have the large scale here for you.
But this only says 10,574 square feet?
May I?
I don't know why that's missed. David Wire, and when was this one done?
Just two years ago.
So that's newer than this one. Two certified engineer stamps and two different measurements on the lot.
So it's listed the same measurements. I don't know why the math is different on both of them.
So your linear dimensions are all the same, but you have two different square-foot certified maps here before us.
I...
I don't... It's just something that is parked up. I mean, it's just... Do you know the FEMA flood plain, what the height is down there?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't.
But when you read the article, you understood that you can be up to three feet above that flood plain to build?
Yes.
And then by the time you're through, you're putting in a structure that's 46 feet here, which would block everyone's view on that whole block? I just... My personally, I have a hard time with it. I mean, I was hoping you could tell me different, but...
They could go to a...
What's that?
I said they could get an estimate.
And even go to the selectmen and get another 10-feet foot on top of it, so I don't... You know, I've got the signed signature, you've done a lot of work, I'll give you that, but it doesn't really explain anything as to what may happen now. So not very informative.
Right, well, I think what we're asking for is to be included in the map. I know there is a lengthy process, even after you're included in the...
We don't decide, just so you understand, this board does not decide. We just give the town meeting members, they're the only ones that can rezone it, we just give them the ammunition that they're looking for.
Right, right, so...
That's why I'm trying to ask the questions here tonight. It's a little easier in front of four people than it is with 50 people, so...
Understood. There is a process of pre-meetings and planning boards and folks that have to be involved if you opt in to the overlay. So I'm sure that anything that goes there will be suitable, it will be in keeping with the neighborhood and certainly it will be open for public comment, just like this is today, and everybody will have their piece. But we're not there yet. What we'd like to do is if... That's kind of a wash, that's blue sky if we're not included in the overlay.
Well, we're hoping that you put your best foot forward tonight so that we can make a proper recommendation to the board, to the town meeting.
Mr. Chair, I would feel a little more comfortable if she had someone who's proposing somewhat of a plan for that property. The fact that there is no plan and it is for sale, it leaves it wide open to whoever purchases that, they could do whatever they want that's within this, and there's a lot that they could do under this zoning and it is in a very residential neighborhood.
Just so you understand, that's why I asked if you were still going to be involved. There's so many things that you could do here, so many... You go before the selectmen, you go 10 feet higher, you could go further out. I asked, that's why I asked if you knew about the walkway, the riverside walkway that needs to go in. And if you're selling it, there's nothing wrong with personal gain, but you get all you can get for it and I understand that, but I also have to take into consideration and as the rest of the board does, what the rest of the neighborhood feels like.
Understood and I know you do, but I feel, and I would hope or think that Sargus would feel, that the advantage and the investment to Sargus over time would far outlast any gains that we'd have on a single transaction, so...
There is... I agree with you.
There's a balance of that and preserving the quality of life in the neighborhoods as well, so it's not just all about making money and our job is to try to protect the neighborhoods as well.
So your personal gain, in other words, becomes someone else's loss. Because if this complex goes up in front of them, they no longer have rights, the view rights, they have nothing. And when they go to sell their property, you made the correct move, now they're stuck trying to get rid of it for a lesser price than what it may have been worth. There's some great views down there, it's a great little neighborhood. I came to Sargus and I lived down there, so it's got a home feeling, it's got a feeling of Gloucester or Brockport and there's not much that we have that still has that, but we're taking all this into consideration and I'm bringing it out in the open so that you understand, so... I'm a little concerned with the different square footage on the map.
How light industrial has come in, a lot of things have changed.
The layout is a little tricky.
And still, anything has to be okayed by the planning board.
Will you board members have any questions? Mr. Long?
And look at this map, David Wire. There's this jutting piece right here.
Yes.
And when you look at what was being given out, that jutting piece...
And it's not this.
Is not here. So which one is correct?
It's confusing.
There is a jutted-in piece that does belong to...
I mean, my point is this, if you want to do this, then you would want to have the line straight across, right on the other property also. Have you talked to any... I mean, these three lots on Ballard Street, there's two, and then there's the one next to you was your Fisher house, it's on the right-hand side. I'd like to know what the thoughts of those folks are as to what they want to see this district expanded, as well as the folks on the other side of here. I mean, if you're going to do it, I would rather see not a spot type of zoning, I would rather see a layout of default, you know, that side of the street so that when something is done, you know, the same properties are acquired. I don't think somebody's going to acquire your property and do something really substantial. They can put two family in there and a few other things, but you really have to go to the Board of Appeals and you have to go to the selectmen if you're talking about heights. But it would seem to me that the development of that, if you really want to do this, for the sake of the town, I would think that we would be talking about actually moving that waterfront district up to the right side of Harvard Avenue, you know, Harvard Avenue, rather than having this one piece of property stand out like that. It'd make a lot of sense.
Well, I don't know. That was... Our question originally was why wasn't the waterfront mixed-use overlay extended over the entirety of the waterfront? Why did it start where it did, right at Ballard?
So this does run down to Ballard Street?
It runs as far as Ballard Street Rear and then the remainder of the waterfront that curves around is not included. And that Ballard Street Rear actually abuts the entire rear property line of our property. So I'm curious as to why the other properties that are on the waterfront weren't included as part of the waterfront mixed-use overlay. We have up on the other side of Ballard Street, well-established light industrial, commercial and public properties, as well as the yacht club, that's included in that waterfront mixed-use overlay. And that's why I think to date, your overlay hasn't been used because there aren't many properties to jump in.
It is new to this board. This came out in 2014, 2015. Since I've been on the board, this is the first one, that's why I'm asking you a lot of questions. We're trying to get a feel for it. I did have a call in this afternoon, but this could also be considered as what they call spot overlay, which is illegal right now by the Attorney General's office. We're not 100% sure, I couldn't get legal counsel to answer that. So that's being researched, so you may go make the change and they may not let you do anything with it.
Understood.
So I'm just looking up your protection, your investment, or whatever it may be that you're looking to do, but it does fall under spot zoning.
How... It was my understanding that spot zoning is when a district ends and you go, maybe skip a property and then one over.
Sometimes when you change use, it comes under spot zoning as well.
So how...
What are you zoning for right now for what you have?
Light, mixed-use, commercial.
So light mixed-use, commercial, no residential?
Residential, it's our one mixed...
So you have a little bit of everything on the...
Little bit of everything going on.
I wasn't sure I was reading it correctly when I read it.
And the pier, the gang pier, the boardwalk, gangway, float and boat slide are licensed in perpetuity in the deed.
So those are grandfathered in?
Yes, so...
See, this is why I'm not sure and I would like an answer from legal counsel?
It's in the booklet and legal counsel, your town attorney, what's his name?
That was back when?
Yeah. He's the one that verified how...
So that was before the zoning?
That was not too long ago, it was a couple of years ago, two or three. It's in the folder.
Mr. Chair, how long have you owned the property?
Forty-seven years.
Forty-seven years, this property?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'm curious if anybody in the room knows, are any of the surrounding properties between that and Ballard and over to the bait shop, are any of them currently for sale or under any sort of development plan?
Mr. Menucha? Would you come to the podium, sir?
I can't participate in this, but I can answer that question and I can also answer... The assessors have this as 12,240 square feet. It's right on the assessor's record.
I understand what you're saying. We don't know that because there's two different maps in what was presented to us this evening.
The fellow next door, Ballard Street Rear, currently has plans for condominiums.
For condominiums.
With no mixed use. And I've informed him that, and others have, that he has to have mixed use in there.
It's in the zone.
It's in the zoning and his plans, he's trying to go before...
Menucha's been before Inspeccional Services?
Yes.
They referred it to us and I told them the plans were basically incomplete.
Right, because there's no commercial. So he's trying to do something there. So I'm just answering that question. Thank you.
And as far as how you say about the quaintness and the sort of aura of the community, when we first, my family first came there, we felt the same. We had the Ballard Street landing, we had restaurants just around the corner, we had little traffic, no 18-wheelers down Ballard Street and so forth. Things have changed and it should be, if this were to transpire what we're requesting before you and you're kind enough to listen, that we think it would be a benefit to the town in keeping with what's going on now. So maybe, seeing that whomever wants to put a new proposal in, it would still need to go by your board.
No, we understand that. But as protected to you is why I said, if that decision gets made to turn it into that type of zoning, you are now stuck with that. You can't do anything else with it. You can't go backwards. You would lose everything that you have to the Waterlake District and it could get denied whoever comes back to present it. And then you're stuck with the Waterlake. That means no more fishing piers, that means no more boats, no more commercial activity, which is not included in the Waterlake District.
Is that once a proposal is accepted and opted in?
Excuse me?
That's once a proposal comes before you?
Yeah.
That is accepted and when it's opted in? But until then, the property would remain as it is, correct?
No. If town meeting voted it in for the change, then that would be the new zoning for that lot. So if you didn't sell it or he rejected or didn't come up through it, whomever's looking at it, maybe a partner, you couldn't change it from what it is.
Understood.
That's in the Waterlake District overlay. I had to read it five times for it to make sense to me, but that's basically what it says. Did anyone else?
So is Judy Smith your family?
Yes.
They have the property listed as Judy Smith.
Yes, I'm the personal representative and owner presently.
So you're her representative of the property, you're not the owner of the property?
I am partial, substantial owner of the property, yes.
But you're not on the deed?
No, not yet.
Well, if you're selling it, you wouldn't then be on the deed either.
Yeah, I need to be his personal representative to sell it.
So you're representing...
It's an estate, it's an estate.
It's in your paperwork.
So what relation is the Smiths to you?
The Smiths, senior, is my father and Marcus Smith's my brother.
Questions?
Mr. Long?
This line that goes across the plot plan here that's in the book, what is that line? Is that a high tide?
That's the question I asked, where is the mean mark of the river?
That's the mean high water line, that...
And how many feet above normal tide? Are they saying it?
No, it doesn't.
Mr. Chair, how legally would you vote a change in zoning for a zone that's not on the deed? That's just a statement she's represented.
It's the letter of authorization for her to represent.
It's the last page.
Has there been any... Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Has there been any conversation with the other residents with regard to them also wanting to be incorporated?
I have a sheet that's signed, someone got some signatures.
Yeah.
Probably to go as part of a warrant, am I correct, Nancy? That this be placed, that this would be the signature page. And I have one that has yeses and noes on it, so...
I find there's seven signatures from Harvard Avenue and...
Most of them have an N next to it?
Yeah, they're across the street, almost about nine, 11, 5, 7. That's a street number, street address right there. Yeah, okay, one and six.
We also have contacted our precinct rep... We also have contacted our precinct representatives as well.
And that is Precinct ten?
Yes. Mr. Ring is here this evening. Mrs. Scuzzarella came and viewed the property yesterday, as did Mr. Martin Costello, and he's given me a letter of support that I brought with me this evening. And of course, Mr. Manugian is part of our precinct as well. And I had left a message for, but not yet heard back from Mr. Delios. Although, he did sign the petition.
Shall I bring this up to him?
Anything else on the board? It is a public meeting?
May I?
Yes, ma'am. She just kept reading to the record. She's knocking on.
... that are on the year above our, the town would benefit in how the area has changed.
Is that pink at least? This is a letter from, I believe in a butter. I don't know if you want to read it into the record when we open the public hearing?
It's from a town meeting.
From Precinct ten?
Now, the reason I brought up the, how the area's changed, I understand too, a biotech establishment is going on, going to be installed across the river. It's to bring it back to where it was. As to what you're referring, it seems almost not progressive and nearly impossible, where you have UPS, trailer trucks, nothing really that.
UPS is a lot better than the junkyard that was there, I can tell you that.
It is. But as far as how it affects the quaintness of the neighborhood?
I understand.
I would think that the town would rather see a nice little restaurant go in, or something more in keeping. Doesn't mean you have to jump, jump right into?
I think the way this, the zoning is listed here, it could be numerous things. And I guess that's what's concerning to me, where it is such a small residential. I don't think you can compare that neighborhood to 107, in all fairness.
Well, we're not trying to compare it to 107.
No, but you're saying that that establishment over there, that development?
It affects the whole, it's changed.
Effectively, it does.
We've lived there a long time.
I understand that. But I'm saying, when you're talking about that small little footprint, and a house living here, and a neighbor living here, and putting commercial space, which potentially could be any one of them, any number one of these things, it doesn't have to be a two-family house like you're referring to. It could be any one of these commercial uses could go there.
If approved.
And you're right next door to you versus having, I understand the ramifications of that, the UPS, if I was on there, and I wouldn't have approved that UPS. It is aesthetically better than that, but traffic and the trucking down the streets and all that, it does impact the neighborhood. And so, I don't, I think you're talking apples and oranges, but I do think you do have to consider how each of those impacts the neighborhood.
Understood. Well, the mixed-use overlay is there. It is part of your bylaws for a reason. It is to revitalize the waterfront, to promote water use, to invest in the public enjoyment of the waterfront, to really bring back to the waterfront what once was.
Yes, that's what happens. That's why I asked you.
Well, it's never going to happen unless you let it happen. So I think that that can, you can, it can be your own best friend or your own worst enemy in some of these things. We have these before us, and these are our bylaws of our town, and we're here to help you realize these things. And things that you're investing in help it come to life. And if it's something that the?
If we don't ask you these questions, then we'd be negligent if you were sitting across the street and someone was doing it to you.
Of course, I understand.
So we try to bring it all out and be as fair as possible.
And we certainly understand that not everybody is going to agree with everything all of the time. But sometimes, decisions have to be made for the greater good of the whole, rather than the individual. And that is, is why I think that it would be a good investment for Saugus. I know it was important that you capture Ballard Street rear because it abuts the public landing, and that does make sense. And when, if that does come to realization, the next step that would make the most sense would be our property. Because the reality of it is, is when you come across that waterfront, and you scoop around Ballard Street rear, which does not have any dock rights as it stands today, just 25 feet over, there's a chain-linked fence, and it is only 25 feet of our property along the waterfront that would be included in the overlay. But although it's 25 feet, it would probably be the most important 25 feet that you have. Because I do believe this is the only grandfathered deep-water dock that your waterfront has to offer. And?
Understood. Okay, as I said, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open it up to the public.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mo Mepmas, Darrell Ring, Town Meeting, increasing 10. I've also walked the property. I know back when this district was, mixed-use overlay was created, I was on Town Meeting, and we had to stop somewhere. When I voted it, I mean, I agreed, the whole thing, all the way to the old spuds, maybe should have been on there. Again, I walked the property, and what's to stop the neighbor from building 40 feet? Like, I know, if they were to sell the property, you said, it might bother the neighbors if they, no, who knows? Someone could go, whatever the mixed use is, right? But what's to stop their neighbor next door from doing the same thing? So my only, you know, a couple things. So again, let's see. So I just want to let it on record, I'm in favor of it, and I know it's this give and take and everything, but again, we had to stop somewhere, or the maker of the article had to stop somewhere. And I do believe we should have went all the way around. But like, I'm not sure if everyone walked it or whatever, but you guys, you know better than me. I don't know all these zoning laws and all that stuff, but to stop this particular person, I think it's a great thing. I've seen the pylons there, if they're, if it's able to have a dock there, or deep-water dock, or?
So they're only on, on big steps at this point?
No, 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 I understand it's going to come before Town Meeting.
That's correct.
So I'm only just, I'm in favor. So just want to make it noted, I'm in favor of it. I walked the property. And again, we're talking about heights, all that stuff, but Ballard Street rear could do the same thing, so just thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor or against? Any other questions from the board? Mr. Long, any other questions?
I don't like the idea of zoning this one more. You know, I think what Mr. Ring has just said, they have to stop someplace, but on the other hand, if you want to have a decent layout with that piece of property, it will benefit the town and the neighbors, I would think that you'd have to have just more than, you know, just that piece of property, I think you'd have to have the entire side of the street. All those houses on that, in here, those lots, they're all in the river. You can do something down there, but you'd have to do it in kind of unison. First of all, the river better be dredged before you can do much, it's a mud flat as well. But I have a hard time just looking at this and saying, this is, this is good. It's good. It may be a good selling point. And I was looking at the uses that they can put it to, that one particular lot, the number of uses, which may not play well with the neighbors on that. On the other hand, if there, if there was a development of that side of the property, I don't like piecemeal development. That's, to me, is what it looks like. But I can understand the petition's problem with, all of us went down there to look at I wouldn't mind owning it myself with the access to the river. But on the other hand, like I say, I looked to the left, and I see those other homes. And, you know, what about those folks too? This is supposed to benefit the town and the neighborhoods, not just one individual.
Mr. Thompson?
I mean, looking here at everything that we talked about and everything that was presented, I don't know, I see some, I see several neighbors, direct neighbors, our co-hosts. And I wish I had more information about why the, why they stopped where they did. But he makes some good points, Mr. Long, about the other neighbors. Honestly, I don't know if I'm comfortable with going against this tonight.
Hello, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
This map that was drawn by Art and Wyatt, this piece that cuts into that backyard, according to what's in here, that piece is not part of the overlay. What happened?
I don't know. That's why I passed the map. That's why I passed the map. It didn't add up, it don't make sense.
Otherwise, the overlay would look like a jock into that piece, into the property that's under discussion tonight. I, I'd like to see something, I'd like to see it in unison with everything else except?
Excuse me, gentlemen, may I? That piece of property that you're referring to does belong to Lanzillo, to the rear there, and he's already on that overlay map. So that piece, little piece, goes to him.
Well, no, he may be part of the overlay at this point, but that piece is not, it's not what's being shown here. Okay? It's this piece, this jock right here. And it's just one.
This area here doesn't show up on any of the materials?
Yeah. Because original, the original map indeed will show that my property extends southwesterly. So there is a piece here that extends down to?
But this is what you're showing Town Meeting, a clear line right across here, and that doesn't exist on that map.
That's because that came from your map, that line?
That's your own town map.
That was from your own town map.
That's your own block and block map.
That is the map that clarifies exactly what property is for the water district, that map that is shown. So some of yours is not on there, according to the town map?
No, yeah, none of ours is on there. But I don't believe, but the line that you drew, your mapmaker, the line did come straight across. So we thought?
You thought that did?
I, we didn't quite understand it ourselves, but we thought you were right.
So we should, you should really, my thought is, you should really get Art and Wyatt to prepare a better plot plan, a better overlay map, exactly where, how much your property is going to be on it?
All of our property would be on it.
These maps, these maps are your maps. These are your town maps.
And there's a discrepancy from what you're presenting to the town map. Am I correct, Robert?
Also?
This is the, this is the assessor's map right here.
So I don't understand what I can do?
We're trying to understand.
I don't know if I, how I, what I could do to help with that.
I mean, you did a lot of work putting this all together. That's undoubtedly, and we thank you for that. But when it comes to the maps, and it comes to stamps, and it comes to square footage of lots, that all plays a big part into it?
No, I understand, and that's why we caused?
So you're losing some of the waterfront because it's not in it, according to the town map. According to your map, it's all in it, so?
This is the water right here, right? So this would be the?
Can I show them?
Saying all this would be comfortable, right?
Yeah. So that yellow is not in it?
Let me show you. This is, this is our property. Here's the waterfront, and here's where the overlay ends, is this pink, pink property.
Right here?
Yeah. And it abuts the back of us. That's the, that's the, according to your town maps, the high-water line.
And we don't have an elevation?
But this little, I know what you're talking about. That little divot? And if you take your pen and you put it right here, it makes a divot into our property, that actually is deeded to Ballard Street rear, the one in the pink. So I don't know how Ballard Street rear's entire property can get?
Is that the difference?
In the mixed-use overlay without effectively including our property as well.
So Art and Wyatt's map is not correct?
That might be the discrepancy with the numbers, because if you have a divot here that belongs here, that's not reflected here, and that's why the number's higher on this page.
So the map, the test, the true test of map is not true in the test of?
Well, assessor's maps are, that's why when somebody's doing something, they always have, they're required to get a certified plot plan. The assessor's map is not.
And that's what we have, is a certificate?
Can that, can that small piece really be 2,000 on the overall, if the overall piece is 12?
Depends on, I mean, you're saying it's a small piece. Who's to say what a small piece is, I guess, if you don't have it on the map?
Well?
What's it showing on that map?
Looking at, taking that spot in that book.
Yeah. What is it saying on the scale of public data? I mean, I don't think that really matters for the decision. Tonight, we're just making a recommendation for the planning board, whether we want to add this property.
Okay.
To, I think we're getting two in the weeds, something that's not really a review.
So there's no one else in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Mo, represent any other questions?
Did you have a question for the council?
I did have a question for the council. And they didn't get back to me. Something I picked up on today. Basically, it was square footage of lots, it was part of what's on one plan and not on the other. And we do have two stamps, that's why I brought it to everyone's attention. They're both stamped by engineers. One's a little older than the other.
Right.
But it, one of them can't be right, so?
I'm going to guess it's this one, because it doesn't reflect that piece.
And is that part of the water district overlay? Some of it is.
It goes to this property, though.
Right.
Goes to this one, so? Or maybe, maybe that's why it's not reflected, maybe it's not. I don't know. If that property in entirety is, then I would think that they can't cut a piece of that property up.
So this would be a lot easier for the board if we had a little indication of where this was headed. So this is like handing your checkbook to me tonight and saying, don't spend any money out of it. So we don't have enough information, really, to make the proper decision to send it on to Town Meeting.
Understood.
And all the work that you've done, and we're grateful for this, but there's such discrepancies within it.
Well, I think that the discrepancies that might, you might find to be confusing are in your very own town maps. I've got, I do understand you're seeing some lot discrepancies there, but so far as the shape of the property and where it lies? But so far as the shape of the property and where it lies in your overlay, I noticed the very same thing myself. If that little, that little divot that you're talking about in, in the certified plot plan is included in the overlay, yet it's kind of juts into our property, is this truly an overlay with the line? Or is it specifically only Ballard Street Rear is included, even if the line overlays on to another property?
So in the beginning, I said to you, that would be a determination by the board's attorney.
Oh, okay.
So this is, this is part of the hangup here?
Yeah, because it was, it was my understanding that it kind of just stopped, you know, stopped on that line out to Harvard Ave. But the way the, the map is written, it kind of swerves around and... So there may actually be a part of the rear of our property that is already included based on the way the overlay is written.
So you grandfathered in for what you have?
Yes.
You have the frontage for what is needed, but your lot, as a single-family residence, although you're changing that, doesn't meet the qualifications of 20,000 square feet. So that's one issue. Where the overlay starts and finishes is something that we need to rectify. Where the flood plain and the height from FEMA, we have no information on that. Because like I said, it's from the floorboard of whatever's being built. So it could go up 10 feet before it counts. And then you're allowed to put 40 feet on top of that by that, by the directions of Article, Article 18. So you could wind up with the building, by the time you're out of flood plain, 60 feet near if the selectmen deem necessary to give you an extra 10 feet. So that, that's pretty hard to take, being a neighbor. So I, I, I wish we had some clear answers, but I personally don't. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'm not sure if we could send it back to the maker. They could come at a different time with more information. Can you do that with a recommendation?
No, we have to recommend. We don't recommend. If Town Meeting wants to do that, that's up to Town Meeting again.
All right, hearing none. I'd like to get the...
Motion to close the public hearing if the neighbors want to speak.
Motion to close the public hearing.
No further, no one, no one wants to speak?
Seconded that?
I have a question. Uh, sorry. Do I have to?
Yes, you do.
So I, we, my name is David Texera. I live off Reynolds, on Reynolds Drive, directly across from, it's right off at the flashing light on top of the Hill of Hamilton, heading down toward that neighborhood. So I got this in the mail about the zoning board. Sorry?
They meet in a town hall, someone's board of appeals. They changed the...
Is that the fact? All right, so I'm in the wrong place and...
Yeah, so am I. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
I apologize to that.
Is that for the residents that they want to add their things?
Yes. Yeah, I got a bigger agenda.
They're in town hall. I don't know if this, I know this...
You'll still be there. They'll probably still be there.
Yeah, I was number two on the list.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's not your fault. It's just whoever. Is that right?
Yeah.
I see all these people. Have a good night. Thank you. Mr. Reno?
It's a play special.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on the recommendation.
Will I get a second?
Second. Vote, you vote now. Vote, vote for it or against?
Isn't that, oh, I'm sorry, the wording, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, vote to recommend or vote not to recommend?
I'd like to make a motion for us to vote to recommend or not to recommend.
Okay.
For, for Town Meeting.
So put it to a vote.
Is that correct?
Get a second.
No. You're either voting to recommend or you're voting not to recommend.
So you're like...
But you can't...
For Town Meeting. Didn't I say that?
No.
You have to say, I make a motion to vote, to recommend this to Town Meeting, or I make a motion to not recommend to Town Meeting. But you can't make a motion for both.
I thought we were motioning to, to, I thought I was motioning for both. So then we all individually...
Yeah, we did that.
We, we did. Okay. I'm gonna step behind.
When we close the meeting. No, well, it's, it's the rest of the criteria. Bob?
Sir?
So are we voting now?
So what is, what is your, your recommendation? I mean, what is your?
Motion? Why should I vote? Make the motion because he's gonna change it no matter what?
Let's go back to the lot size. John, you mentioned earlier...
We close the public hearing.
I know. We both close the public hearing, all right?
Yeah.
So now you have a board discussion.
You can have a board discussion.
Make the motion and then have discussion.
We voted to close. So let's have the board's discussion. Okay, John, you mentioned earlier about a lot size requirement on that, of so many square feet. And if I understood right, a lot size does not imply, the required lot size is not met by this particular lot.
The other thing that we don't have, Bob, is what is the setbacks for a new building under FEMA regulations? There's a lot that's missing there. So...
Then, I think the, well, I also have the legal question too.
Right.
I think my motion would be then to refer it back to the maker due to unprovided information such as meeting lot size requirements.
My understanding is we only vote to recommend or not recommend. Town Meeting can vote to send it back.
Just a recommendation.
We're recommending the reason why we're recommending it. In other words, if Town Meeting want to know why you're not recommending.
Yeah, so you, so what you, I think the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, would be, your vote, your motion would be to not recommend, and this is the reason why.
Yeah.
Because I thought you said recommend, to send it back.
The motion would be to refer it back to the maker of the article.
That's what I'm saying. That can't be the motion. That has to be Town Meeting's motion.
That is a, that's a recommendation to Town Meeting.
That we refer it back to the maker?
I'm sure there was a recommendation.
We're only voting to recommend or not recommend, correct?
That's correct.
And then at Town Meeting, you can list that as a reason why you didn't want to recommend, but your motion is only to recommend or not...
I think you can absolutely, on a referral, state why you're moving to refer it back.
Clerk says no vote.
So this could come up at another time, a point in time.
You'll hopefully, you'll get to, you'll get to move it again.
Exactly.
Next week, at Town Meeting. At Town Meeting, you can do that.
I don't think you really want to leave it to that point in time.
But, but this is only a year, so no vote.
At Town Meeting, you're going to have the petitioner stand up and give their point of view. Are you gonna, one of us gonna stand up, give our reason at that point in time? Our reason should be known now.
No, so on our, on our recommendation, typically what this board does when we recommend or don't recommend, we write our reasons and to support our decision on that. And Town Meeting will get that, and that will be read into the record at Town Meeting. And, Bob, we all know, you will get up at Town Meeting and you will reiterate why you voted no. You will.
Bob made you sit there. Let the rest of you do the work.
I'm pretty sure we don't have to worry about that happening. But my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is we are only voting to recommend or not recommend, but we can write our reasonings, which we always do, on that sheet.
On the, on the recommendation, whether it's for or against.
You make the move directly?
I'm not making a motion. You're making the motion, because I'm not gonna, we're not playing this game tonight. We're too tired. And we're only at the very first public hearing.
We've got a long ways to go here. I'm ready. I probably want to...
Make your motion, please.
I moved that we not recommend this article to Town Meeting for lack of information.
Do I get a second to that motion?
I will second that.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have the certified plot plan now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, right here.
Let's just, we're saying it doesn't matter. This has come to an end. I would do clarifications, and you can make a second attempt.
Absolutely. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you much.
So I thought, I thought the motion, you say you stay close in the motion.
Thank you, lady Jasmine.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you too.
Thanks for listening.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you. This is my great-grandson, Mason.
All right, buddy. Thank you. We won't be late.
You're gonna be a future politician?
Thank you for your time.
He'd like to be.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
You're young. You wait till later. You'll get used to it.
All right, next public hearing?
Now time for the next public hearing? Recommendation to Town Meeting as well? Is the maker of the motion, of the warrant?
Article number 29.
Mr. Serrino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I did submit some articles. It'd probably be easy to go over them one by one since they're separate articles. The reason why is we, we do have seven lots that are in the Business Highway District, residential, Business Highway Residential District. And, and only one was developed, and the development was at Gulf Town. And we see what's happening over there. We're having problems of the impact of the neighborhood. So what my zoning articles do is they try to provide greater protection to our residential areas and, and lessen the visual impact. And on the first article that we did, I've submitted that we, for the far the Business Highway District, that we increase the setback from 50 feet to any side that abuts a residential district. So if you have a commercial district or mixed-use or Business Highway District that abuts a residential district in the Business Highway Residential District, they, they need 75 feet. So we upped the increase for the setback for that. I don't know if you want me to go through the whole list of them?
Well, I get a question on that one, Mr. Serrino.
Yes.
When you say it requires a 75-foot setback, and that's any side, front, back, left side, right side, it would pertain to that?
Yes.
So if there's a natural buffer zone, they can't touch that buffer zone?
A natural, no. If it's a 75, any setbacks now, with Town Meeting did this in 2021.
Yes.
Any setbacks, before they were using setbacks as parking spaces, drive-through windows up at Hilltop. Now the setbacks have to be left in its natural zone.
Is that already in this article?
No, it's, it's, you, Town Meeting already passed it in 2021.
For 50?
Yeah.
So you're looking to increase it from 50 to 75?
We're looking for additional footage.
50 to 75, just if it's abuts a residential district. That's, that's in the, both Business Highway and Business Highway Residential. So if it abuts a residential area, it has to be 75 feet away, any buildings. And you can't use it as parking or drive-through windows. That was all taken care of in 2021. We did that when we did the 50-foot. And now it's 75 feet. And that's with this for a side of the, uh, supports.
We're gonna take these and vote on them one at a time?
I, I think it'd be easier.
Any questions from the board?
No, this is pretty easy.
Mr. Long?
No.
Do I get a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion.
A recommendation from the board, sorry?
Make the recommendation of, uh, my closing.
He's, he's making a recommendation?
Make the closing, he's wanting to do it.
Oh, yeah, we got you.
Yeah, they are all set for a public hearing.
They are all open to a public hearing.
Yep.
Well, maybe it's easier if we ask it. Does anyone here to speak in favor or against these articles?
Well, this is, this particular article. Yeah.
Saying that, I'll make a motion to close that public hearing.
And I'll second that motion. You get a vote on it?
Aye.
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 Public meeting's closed. We get a recommendation on that article alone? We have one from Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve, to recommend.
You have a second?
Second.
You take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Mr. Serrino, your second, second warrant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What this article does, it, it eliminates the as-of-right 55-foot-high development. And we go back to the requirement that's been in our town zoning laws for 50-plus years. Anything over 40 feet would need a permit from the board of selectmen. And to go a maximum of 60 feet, that's, that's our zoning on Route 1. So what...
Question to you, if I may. Why does that, and I wondered this myself. Why do those height requirements go back to the board of selectmen?
It's...
Excuse me?
Protect, yeah, well, protection of the neighborhood. But it's always, it's always been our zoning bylaws. Like, and it puts the board in a position, John, where we could even negotiate. If you want to go over 40 feet, you want to go to 50 feet or 60 feet, which is the max on Route 1. It's only 50 feet in town. You could negotiate with them, say, well, you want to go 60 feet, but all the apartments have to be one bedrooms instead of two. It doesn't impact the school system. It has less of an impact on the town. So it puts the town in a better negotiating position.
That question has been asked by a lot of the residents of Saugus, why it goes back out in the hands of the building, the bottom, the planning board. And that answers the question in public. That's why I ask you that.
It just, it just gives greater protection throughout the whole town and our neighborhoods.
Yep.
That's what it's all about, our neighborhoods. So that, that's what this, this article would do, John, on Mr. Chairman.
Again, this is a public meeting. Anyone in the audience to speak in favor or against?
Saying that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Article 30.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You get a motion for, for recommendation?
I make a motion to recommend Article 30, as stated here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Recommendation passes for what I'm on. Your next warrant, Mr. Serrino?
Uh, yes. The next warrant is basically the same as the last one you just voted on. It gets rid of the as-of-right to build up to 55 feet. And it brings it down to 40. And if you want to go over 40 feet, you need permission from the board as to permit. And like I said, it's a 50-plus-year zoning requirement.
You're gonna make that as a separate war, as a separate warrant to...
Yeah, because it's language and, and height number two, number... It's all under the same height, 2110E, but you have one and two under the zoning. And we're just, it's basically the same paragraph under height.
So basically, all these affect Article 21 of the zoning?
Yeah, 21E height.
Thank you.
Yeah. We have height one and height two.
Again, this is a public meeting. Anyone in the audience to speak in favor or against? Hearing none? Can I get a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion. I'll wait back. There you go. You just did? I make a motion to recommend.
I have a motion to recommend. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes, four to zero.
Rest of the public, rest of the public, John.
We close it. The next warrant, Mr. Serrino?
Yeah, the next one is the 2110F, additional height requirements in the Business Highway Residential. Like what happened on Gulf Town is they come in and they built all residential. They weren't even allowed to, to put commercial in there. The planning board, the last planning board waived it. And I just want to say, I do commend this board because you're cleaning up the mess that previous boards, you know, development, developments that were approved by previous boards. And I think is, there hasn't been any new developments before you yet, but I think you're doing a hard job and a good job trying to clean up the mess that was left to his.
Well, thank you for that recommendation.
And I want to thank the town manager also. He does try to provide the boards with all the resources, whether it's legal, engineering, that, that the boards need to do your job. Because, you know, you need that help, so... But this article here, John, in the Business Highway Residential District only, and it's only seven lots. It's small, little lots. I think I have a, yeah, yeah. The lots include over-by-the-way loose property, those small streets, trailer... The lots include, uh, over by the Wayloose property, those small streets, Trilia, Trilor Road, Millred, Brian, Goldie, they're all paper streets, but it doesn't include the Wayloose property because that's, they wanted to leave that out because of the rear development there, so they didn't, they wanted to leave it as it was for that. But it's all them little lots here. Then you have over by the Essex Street ramp, behind the gas station and out of Asia, there's some woods in there that are but a residential area, not much land. But the big lots are the Continental Restaurant, that runs from the Continental all the way over to the Lindfels Parkway Bridge. This Kiki Realty, which is Continental, and RFF Realty, which owns 16 acres, Continental owns about 15 acres. So it's those two big lots there, Butts Sanders Drive and David Drive. Then Hawk Street, when you go up Hawk Street on the right-hand side, it's a probably couple acre lot there. You have the Palumbo property, it's nine acres, but in the, all the homes on Forest Street. The Hilltop's already been developed. And then you have the last piece is the Walnut Street Bridge to Spring Street, behind like Aunt Bob's Furniture, the Salvation Army, there's some woods that are butts a residential neighborhood there. So that's, that's all the lots that are in that Business Highway Residential, not many lots, small lots. But what that would do is that would limit the height in the Business Highway Residential lots to three stories, 40 feet high. So they couldn't even, if they, they couldn't even come to us to go any higher than that. And I, and I, like I said, it's less impact on the residential, on neighborhoods here, visual and, and, you know, number of apartments that could go in there. So that's what that lot does. So anything in the Business Highway Residential District now cannot exceed the 40-foot height.
So that's, uh, 2110F?
Yes.
Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or against?
Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Take a second?
Aye. No, you're right, you're right as usual, Jamie.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend the article number 32 to the town meeting, as stated here.
Second.
Are we ready for that? Is there one more you had, you have, Mike?
Yeah, one more after this.
There's one more.
You have, we're, we're recommending them individually.
We only voted on the.
Oh, okay, sorry, 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 I'm sorry. Sorry, you're right.
Second, sorry, second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Next one, article 33. The public hearing, 33.
I'm gonna ask the applicant to play it to the board. Once he opens, I can open. Mr. Sorino?
The last one, John, is 2110H, the density. I'm proposing that we, and, and I've been talking to a lot of town, it's not just my proposals, I've been talking to a lot of town meeting members and they feel the same way. In fact, a lot of them tell me that had they known what was going to happen out in Route 1, they would have never voted for it in 2015. I wasn't around, uh, so, when that happened, so. But that's what they tell me anyhow. But this has to do with the density, to reduce it to 20 units to 15 units an acre. And you all do have a chart of what that would mean. I looked at nine-acre lots and above, I didn't even look at anything under nine acres, smaller lots which could be combined into one lot. And the apartments, potential departments could go from 3,840 down to 2,880, almost 1,000 apartments, this, this would reduce on Route 1. You know, with the, with the 40Bs, I, I looked at that and I looked at our, our own zoning bylaw, which required 25% affordable housing, 40Bs, the MBTA Housing Bylaw, that, they just require all families, they don't even require a single family, it's gotta be all families. And the impact that's gonna have on the community is gonna be tremendous. So I looked at even our 10% zoning bylaw, affordable housing bylaw. Someone builds 100 apartments, 10, 10 go to be affordable housing, but your baseline or what your, your 10% baseline that the town requires stays, that goes up and so your 10% is just, you're just breaking even, you're not even gaining. You'll never reach your 10%.
Yep.
The 40Bs, they, they require 25%. Built 100 apartments, will gain either 25 units, 15 units, will, will gain and go to our 10% affordable housing. So it's gonna take a long time unless, like, I understand, I don't know if you, anybody on the board knows, behind McDonald's, the 345 units, I heard there was gonna be roughly a majority of them, or 75% of them maybe, gonna be all counted to our affordable housing. So I, I don't know, that's what I heard. But even, even with the affordable housing, the 40Bs, I mean, they're only required to be affordable for 30 years. After 30 years, you're back to square one.
And affordable isn't low income?
No.
Affordable isn't really affordable for a lot of families?
You're right. We'll never, we'll never reach that 10%. I, I don't see how, I, I mean, I personally blame, and the state complains about a housing shortage, affordable housing shortage, they're to blame because they only allow communities to do 10%. They only allow, they allow 40B developments come into town, we have no control over them and they only require 25% affordable housing. You're never gonna reach your goal. It's the state's fault why we don't have enough housing in this state. And now they're putting pressure on the town, who knows what's gonna happen later on? This MBTA zoning requirement for all families, that might be a first step, the state might come along later and say, no, we're gonna require this now, more housing units. That's why we need to get our zoning bylaws under control. And that's how I feel.
Okay, well, our zoning bylaws do not apply to a 40B.
They what?
They don't apply to a 40B.
No. Nope.
So.
So let's, that's what the density, I hope, will do. At least it brings it down to the state requirement with the MBTA of 15 units, uh, 15 units an acre and that won't tie us up or get us tied up with the MBTA. Well, what are you doing, 10 units an acre, we require 15. I think it's, and I think it's a pretty significant drop of 1,000 apartments.
Yeah. A lot of people would be about to ask.
I can, I can only propose these things after speaking to town meeting members and getting input from as many people as I can, but I can only propose them and it's up to town meeting to decide what they want to do. It's their, their community, just as it is our community, so.
Thank you for all the work and I know it would have put something forward, you do a lot of research on it, so.
Right.
I appreciate all the time you put into it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Again, this is a public meeting?
Question?
Sir? Come to the podium.
Nancy Mayfield, have there been any ANRs on any of the Business Highway District? Any ANRs pending that, any ANRs pending that where the zoning is frozen to, to the previous?
We have no submissions, no ANRs.
Nothing.
We've had one and we rejected it, like, that went to court.
Which one was that?
That was the one that was up, um, Starbucks, Starbucks on Northbound.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So they wanted to switch some lots with the mall and.
So that could potentially.
Could come back.
Be, I don't want to use the word grandfathered, but the existing.
But the state.
Language could apply to that if a court rules in their favor.
Well, the state had a problem with them passing over the Saguas River.
Yep.
So onto Route 1, so that, that helped the town a little bit.
Yep.
So.
You know, when this, just an editorial note, when the Business Highway District was proposed, it was, everyone thought that by allowing a planning board to, to have that best interest, if you will, it's in the beginning language, you know, and then you had Essex Landing and they ruined it for everybody with what they did. Their promises went hollow and you see this type of.
They all have, and that's why, that's why this board and the town is in the predicament it's in. You're not supposed to grant waivers under that substantial highway division. The past board granted seven waivers.
Yep.
To make that a doable project, which should have never happened.
Yeah, and Conservation Land, and Lennox Hotel, and on and on it goes.
These buffer zones that, that refers in Section 21 to refer back to subdivisions.
Yep.
Are any unanswered questions within them?
Yep.
Say that no buffer zone shall be destroyed. They did not leave one up at 860, they're all gone, all the trees, everything. It, it's horrific. These articles were written in the best interest of the town for substantial growth.
Some will argue that it's reactionary and it'll stifle any development, but I'd ra, I'd rather, I'd rather weigh, I'd rather bring the, bring it back a little bit and see what people come up with. It's, it's just, I know, Mr. Long, you had said, uh, at town meeting, I'd rather, I'd rather see a proposal, and we did that with, with the Palumbo property, remember, recently? And.
That currently is coming back up hearsay as a 40B.
Yeah.
We don't have any filings.
Yeah, all right, well, whatever. You answered my question, there's no ANRs except for perhaps that one that's.
That's correct. Thank you, sir.
Just a comment on these overlays.
Sir?
If I had to do over again, I was on town meeting at the time, I absolutely stand and speak against. They have not benefited the town in any way, shape, or form. If you drive up Essex Landing, if you drive up Palms Avenue, you see an enormous, looks like a huge swimming pool's going in over here on one side, and you have all that construction equipment over there. Where's the hotel that we were told was gonna happen? All the good things that were promised to the town, never happened. You have the, over by the golf ball drive-in range, there isn't a roadway that goes into that property. It's, you know, emergency vehicles actually would have to go through a parking lot with barreling parking, so that if anything pulls out of that and blocks the street, emergency vehicle's not gonna get particularly to a far-reaching building over there.
We asked for recommendations. Not that we get them, but we asked for recommendations from all these departments and pretty seldom do we get anything that comes back.
Well. I would suggest that there was nothing wrong with the zoning, it was those that interpreted it and allowed the Hilltop to do what they did. You know, the division, Robert Luongo was very clear that he wanted to incentivize people to combine parcels, to, to, to merge parcels together. It didn't happen and the planning, the planning board had discretion. Unfortunately, it was applied to the benefit of the developer in North of Town. However, I will say this, the money coming in from the tax revenue is huge. We're still budgeting $500,000 for new growth, it's the same new growth that's been there 10 years in a row and it's much more than that.
Is the money coming in through actual real estate taxes or is it coming in through the permitting fees?
Both, more so the real estate taxes. Analyzing.
Is it really the bit, the, you know, permit fees that kind of carry the ball?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so let me ask you this question. At the growth rate that we're heading right now, with two more developments coming online, which have both two and three family bedrooms, and a high school that's fairly new, where are we gonna, where are we gonna put these children? You were a teacher at the high school at one time, where you taught inside trailers. Are we headed back to that?
I, I, I don't know what's in the apartments that you're talking about in terms of bedrooms.
Yep.
I, I do, I do know this, that, you know, you blame the state, you know, I, the state is currently paying for Saguas for two-bedroom on Section 8, $2,800. And for, for, for three-bedroom, I believe it's 33 or 34 and change. And, and they pay for the furniture, and they pay the first, and they pay the security, and the tenant gets to keep the security at the end of the lease, even the landlords. So the state is putting a lot of money into housing and, and incentivizing landlords to, to take.
So my question that I've had, and I've had it all along, is why doesn't this count as any inclusionary housing? If the state is paying these, why don't we pick up what the state is putting down? So in other words, if that development that you're speaking of is now going 50% Section 8, why aren't we credit it for that 50% of that, that development?
I, I would ask your planning director that question, you know, I mean, it's, the state is pushing to change zoning to allow for accessory units and garages and so forth, you know, and ultimately, the state does control zoning. But another issue, another time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we fold on the last article?
We have to close. I make a motion to close the public hearing if there's any, if there's anything else.
I'll second that motion, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. We got a motion?
Make a motion to recommend article 33, as presented by Mr. Sorino.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. There any other questions for board members?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.